It states that I was present virtually and that was a different meeting.
Yeah, I already fixed it.
Okay.
Thank you.
So.
I move approval.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Michelle, that's probably the first time we've amended minutes in about eight years. Okay. The next item is announcements and reports. We have few announcements this evening. The board is currently looking to fill vacancies on three committees. We currently have seven open seats on the newly formed Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee. We have one vacancy on the Cultural Council and one vacancy on the Historic District Commission. More information on these vacancies can be found on the town website at shrewsburymass.gov under the Board of Selectmen's News and Announcements section. Applications for all the vacancies are due by 4:30 PM on September 20th. And the second announcement is the Spirit of Shrewsbury Festival is going to be on Saturday, September 24th, at the middle school. And Sunday there will be a parade held beginning at 1:00 PM at the old Beald School and it will end at the Oak Middle School. You can visit the spiritofshrewsbury.org site for more information on the program. Okay. Anybody else have anything to report or any announcements? No? Mr. Mizikai, do you have anything to report under the manager's report?
I do. Just a couple of things. Good evening, everyone. Couple of updates for the board. Reminder on, to the residents that we're in our final phase of feedback on the strategic plan survey and residents should have received a postcard to do an online survey at this point and if they haven't, they'll get the full survey in the mail that they can fill out by hand and use the pre postage page return envelope to the town. So we're in our final push and looking forward to presenting a final plan within the next 60 days through the board meeting. Just pleased to acknowledge the news coverage of the 9/11 sculpture that will be in front of the new Shrewsbury Police Station. It was featured Saturday morning on Fox and Friends on the Fox News Channel. So congratulations to Chief Anderson, Keith Baldinger, and the students from Assabett Valley who produced that sculpture. And congratulations on that recognition. And then finally, I'm pleased to share that the town's AAA stable bond rating has been affirmed by Standard &amp; Poor's. AAA is of course the highest bond rating that's able to be achieved and currently still a higher rating than the federal government. So we're happy to continue to work diligently to maintain a good financial position for the town and thanks, thanks to the board for your continued support of the initiatives that keep us in such good standing. So that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Okay. The next item is public comment. We didn't get any requests for public comment. So we'll skip down to our next order of business. Next order of business is.
Four more minutes.
Yeah.
Four minutes?
Can't do that yet.
Nope.
We can't do the next one yet. So. Yeah, I'm not going to take one. How about if we jump down to number eight and review the draft warrant for the October 17th special town meeting? Mr. Mizikai?
Sure. Happy to go through that. As of this evening, we're currently looking at 10 warrant articles that are known for the October town meeting. The first three articles deal with amendment to general bylaws. The article that we currently have listed first relative to animal control and just accepting some aspects of the general laws that we haven't over the years, which are required to incorporate into our bylaws. And then adjusting an aspect relative to the holding period of dogs from seven to, from 10 to seven days. So we'll provide more details to the board and have departmental leadership in for a more thorough conversation with you at your next meeting prior to you signing this so they'll be able to answer any questions. The second article that's proposed is increasing the handicap parking fees from the current state minimum of $100 to the $300. The benefit of doing this would allow $200 from each and every handicap parking violation to be dedicated to removing accessibility barriers in the community and fall under the purview of the Commission on Disabilities. The third article that we have for consideration is making a correction to the tree bylaw that was set in the spring. The state attorney general's office found a deficiency in our bylaw that was proposed as the violation fine was $500 and the maximum allowed by general law is $300, so we need to reinstitute that. We'll make some adjustments to the fiscal year '23 budget. And we'll detail out that at your next meeting as those things are still shaping up at this point. We will look to contribute almost $175,000, at least tentatively, to the General Stabilization Fund. We're looking to make two investments in the public safety departments. One is contributing additional dollars to match state funding that was secured through the state budget process for enhanced physicals for firefighters. And then securing a consultant to develop a plan for unified dispatch. Currently dispatch operations are through individually through police and fire. We'd like to unify those. We need to make an additional contribution to capital improvement project to improve HVAC conditions at the Floral Street School. Given the bid results, we need an additional $185,000 for that project. Look forward to a presentation at your next meeting regarding the need for improving an internal process for the town, the creation of a master addressing system which will benefit all finance and administration and some mission oriented departments, including the building department and various aspects, various aspects of the Department of Public Works. We are bringing a proposal to move from conceptual level to final construction document design for the expansion of the Mountain View Cemetery across Boylston Street to Prospect Park area. And then finally, we have been presented with the opportunity to acquire by gift three and a half acres of land off of Old Colony. So we'll provide a little bit more details, but roughly this is a three and a half acre lot. The current owners approached the town and are willing to give us to that without fee. So that would be under consideration for the board at your next meeting. So those are the 10 articles that we have for right now and I'm happy to answer any other question, but we will provide more information prior to your signature and consideration for inclusion on the warrant.
Any questions? Okay. Now we can move on to item six. We have a public hearing with Nubu Rossi on behalf of Terra Brasilius 50 Boston Turnpike for an all alcohol pouring license. Somebody here from that company? Hi. Welcome back.
Good evening. Good evening. Attorney William Keller, I'm here with Nubu Rossi in the hearing.
Good evening.
And if I could just say, having heard the town manager's report and the good news about the AAA bond rating, having served in town government in the town where I reside, I know how important that is and it benefits the taxpayers so well and is a good reflection on the town itself.
That's why we're going to keep him.
Thank you. So Mr. Rossi is here for the hearing on the all alcohol license. It's the Terra Brasilius restaurant that has been operating in Worcester since 2015. They've, I think, come to their senses and are moving their location to a much better one, I would say. And he can fill you in a little bit if you'd like to hear about the restaurant's operations. But we understand that the application is complete and we would like to proceed.
All right. So you were in, what, a month or so ago?
Yeah.
When we got the common victor's license?
Yes.
So we expected he was going to come in. So is there anything you want to add and to refresh us from the last time you were in?
Sure. We've been in business since 2001. We have four locations as well right now. Brazilian Steakhouse, lot of meat, you know. We employ 20, 25 employees with the whole, in the Worcester location right now. Coming to Shrewsbury, it's challenging for us. Good city and looking forward to be here. I've been in hospitality business for, since I was 16. Busboy, dishwasher, waiter, bartender, closing manager, manager, and here I am as a general manager and trying to do the best, you know.
Okay. So hours of operation?
11:00 AM until 10:00 PM, seven days a week.
Not, not on the application?
I think on the application.
You went broad.
I just went broad and requested what would, what would be permissible, but what they, what they really intend to use is.
Right. So the application is 10:00 to 2:00, 10:00 AM to 2:00 AM on Sunday and.
8:00 AM to 2:00.
8:00 AM to 2:00 AM Thursday.
And I understood that was the maximum amount that the town allows.
Right. Okay. Okay, that's fine. Then you won't have to come back.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions?
That was my question.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody who would like to be heard on this? No? Anything you'd like to add?
No. Any questions?
Doesn't seem like it.
Anyone?
I think we asked you.
Appreciate it, I think.
We answered the last time, so.
Thank you for having us here. We appreciate that.
Are you ready to open when you get this license?
We still have a few other inspections coming in, you know. Next, next week we have the plumbing inspection, electrical, building, and fire. So we're about like 90% done.
Okay. Well, assuming.
As soon as we pass everything.
Assuming we vote this, this has to go to Boston, so you have to wait until that comes back before you can use this license.
Sure.
We are aware. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Again, okay, we have motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Okay. Any comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Cassavant.
I move to approve the all alcohol license application for Shrewsbury Street Restaurant, LLC DBA Terra Brasilius 50 Boston Turnpike.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. You're all set on our end.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too.
Okay. Next order of business is a public hearing with Romas Gilzaliskas on behalf of Maronis Park 52 South Quinzigman Avenue regarding an application for an alteration of premises and a change of manager to its all alcohol club license. Is there anybody here from Maronis Park? Okay. So, good evening. Would you like to introduce yourselves?
My name is Romas Gilzaliskas. I'm the general manager of Made Onus Banquet Facilities.
Okay.
This is Algis Glodis, his vice president of the Lithuanian Childress Society that owns the, owns the facility.
Okay.
We've actually withdrawn the first part of that application.
Right.
Which is for the extension of licenses, what we had explained to Patty, what we were trying to do. We're a members only organization, but we're also a private function hall.
Right.
And one thing, and from time to time we'll have members events out by the lakefront and what we've been doing today is our alcohol license is an on premise license, so we serve on premise and then they go outside, drink by the waterfront, and then they have to charge back inside if they didn't want another refill on a soda or a beer and then come back outside. So we thought, we're trying to make it easy. And they say, oh, no, 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 no. There's all these things that you kind of have to go through. It's like, okay, more work than we wanted to. That was the reason for the withdrawal of that particular portion. But the second part of the application was a change of manager for our liquor license. Our current manager, Vinnie Zigmont, wants to kind of relieve himself of those responsibilities. I would like to present the individual here, Algis Glodis, who is a vice, a vice president of the organization to take over that liquor license.
Okay. So.
I just want to make a correction here. In Lithuanian, they call me Algis, but my real name is Al Gimantas, but in English, I, they gave me the Pope's name, so it's Francis A. Glodis.
Okay.
When I went to Catholic school, they changed everything. Then went to college, they changed everything, back in the olden days.
Whatever you want to go by is fine with us. Okay. So what, what they're requesting is to withdraw. So we need to have a vote to allow them to withdraw the application so we can close that.
Okay. Do we need to close the hearing or do the hearing stuff first or?
Well, there is no hearing because they're requesting to withdraw.
Oh.
With, with, well, it was, it was.
I know about the change of manager.
Sorry.
So, but first we have to dispose of the, of the public hearing part, the alteration. So we have a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw the application for the alteration of premises.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed, so voted. So that's taken care of. Okay. Now you have a request for a change of manager. You, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So I think you covered that. Does anybody have any questions? No? Okay. This isn't a public hearing, so we can.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move to approve the application for Lithuanian Charitable Society DBA Maronis Park 54 South Quinzigman Avenue for a change of manager to their all alcohol club license.
Second.
Okay. We have motion second. Any further discussion? If any, none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. So you're all set. I have a question. Does Vinnie still go down to club?
Oh, yeah. Yes. He's a bartender.
Oh, he does?
Yes, he does.
Oh, I went to college with him. I see him every once in a while.
Oh, my goodness. He's got a permanent job.
Yeah, I was kind of hoping he came in.
Excuse me. He's got a permanent job working at Worcester Polytech Institute. He might become an engineer, you never know.
Yeah, really? Okay. All right. So.
One quick question. I thought I heard you say 54 South Quinzig?
I don't know. I just read the paper.
52.
52.
Okay. All right. Maybe I misheard it, but.
You're good.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you very much.
Very good.
Thank you very much. Pleasure.
The next order of business is to review and act to authorize the chair to sign the joint letter with the Shrewsbury School Committee to the Assabett Valley Regional Technical High School, School Committee regarding the town's potential interest in joining the regional district. So Mr. Samir and Ms. Cassavant, you talked to some of the folks at the school committee, so do you want to explain this a little bit to everybody who has spoken?
Sure. So by way of background, saw a lot of this at town meeting. There was a conversation about number of students from Shrewsbury Public Schools decreasing or not being able to attend Assabett Valley and this year, right now, I think they're at one as opposed to 15, you know, to say roughly about 25 kids a year. By way of background, new state regulations for vocational technician admissions, it used to be based on a multitude of factors, including the criteria related to grades, attendance, and discipline record. So there are seven current districts that are part of the Assabett Valley School, but that has since changed. So what would happen before is they'd have the strict criteria, the seven participating members had their students come in and then they'd open up to other districts like Shrewsbury. That's worked well for decades. The standard has since changed where all of the seven participating districts now, any student that would like to go from their districts has first dibs. So as a result, in Shrewsbury, we have very little, actually zero kids going or maybe one now at this point. So there's been a town meeting in May, there was a lot of questions about this, but the school department has done quite a bit. Real briefly, they, they'll go over this tomorrow night, but they've met with the state delegation, they've met with DESI. They've sent a letter to DESI in August, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, pardon the acronym. And then I know Dr. Soder and Mr. Coleman have done quite a bit of work, but at our, as we do meet probably every four or six weeks, just discuss operational matters, exchange information. In between those, semi-annual reports that are required as part of our 2-2 agreement that we did, we just keep each other informed about operational matters. At that time, they had talked about the possibility of reaching out to Assabett to ask the school committee for an opportunity to talk at a future meeting about requesting the possibility of being admitted as a district. So this would be a letter, a joint letter from the school committee and the Board of, Board of Selectmen, just requesting an opportunity to get on an agenda to have that exploration, discussion about possibly being admitted. And that's what we'd be requesting that the board would do today would be authorizing the chair to sign a letter together with the school committee requesting that meeting.
Okay. Got it?
I think you did a great job summarizing. And this is the first step, right? Because we don't, we can't make plans for what to do to remedy the situation if we don't know the answer to the very basic question of would they even consider allowing Shrewsbury to join their district?
Right. And there was a lot of discussion about this during town meeting and I know the school, at tomorrow night's school committee meeting, they'll have far more detail than I just gave in that summary, but they've done a lot of work during that period of time and as Mrs. Cassavant said, this is step one and we'll see what happens there, but you need to go methodically through this, so.
Right.
That's where we're at.
Okay. Okay. So we have motion to allow the chair to sign the letter with the school committee?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? If any, none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Okay. Item 10 is to review and act on a request from Justin Krebs, KIG Silver Strand Walpole LLC to negotiate a local initiative program, commonly known as a LIP agreement, 104 Main Street. That is for another 40B project down at Main Street and North Quinzig, which was, we were given an overview of at our last meeting. So Mr. Mizikai, do you want to just briefly explain what they're, I think we know what they're asking us to do, but would you, do you want to just go over that quickly?
Sure. So through a letter, the developer who is before you, KIG developers, through this letter, they're formally requesting to go into what's commonly known as the friendly 40B process with the town. That is the submission of a joint application for the local initiative program. This would enable, you know, the town to work with the developer, the developer to work with the town to develop mutually agreeable outcome within the confines of Chapter 40B, ensuring that a sufficient number of the units are affordable and ensuring that the public infrastructure is protected and not undermined, so to speak, through this project. It puts the town in the best position to have some say in this project. The opposite of it would be a project where the developer does not come in and request the use of this local initiative program and they just go straight to the ZBA and seek a comprehensive permit and the Board of Selectmen doesn't have a role in that process and they have more control over the, the outcome without engaging with the town. So this is something that we welcome when a developer is going to construct a major project. And we'll just reflect back to a couple, the first meeting in August where we went through a recommended strategy that was prevented, presented by Assistant Town Planner Rowan McAllister to give the board some thoughts on how we approach development projects. Once we reach safe harbor, we're not in any safe harbor right now, so we do think it's in the best position for the board to authorize the town manager to begin negotiations towards and end with a LIP application.
And just to be clear, this is not to encourage the 40B. This is trying to engage in a dialogue to try to look out for the town's interests as best we can for a project that is allowed by state law, we really have essentially no control over as far as having it come into the community. So that's where we are. So any other comments on this? Mr. Samir?
Mr. Chairman, just to reiterate what Mr. Mizikai said, the August 9th meeting when Rowan McAllister, Assistant Town Planner, gave an in-depth discussion about 40B, about why we're subject to it, we did talk about where we are relative to the 10% requirement, which we're pretty well short of that. And we talked about why this would be the best outcome, given the overall statute and requirements of the statute and not having the safe harbor available to us at this time. Given the letter that is from the proponent of this project, what I would be in favor of, and it has been even mentioned in this letter, is that in connection with any LIP application, we also concurrently negotiate and work together on a development agreement. So they would be submitted at the same time. I think that would be, to me, the best foot forward for a collaborative relationship and also make sure that the parties understand where we're going. They seemed very responsive to that in this letter as well forthcoming during, when they were here at our last meeting. So that would be my recommendation that we do them in tandem.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments, questions? No? Well, I would agree, both at the same time. That's not quite what we did the last time and I really think that this, this is the way to go, so. And I think these folks are, seem a little more agreeable to it. We'll find out where we respond. We asked the manager to respond with that, but. So I think the thing to do is to authorize the manager to start negotiations with the proponent and then report back to us.
Yes.
So can I have a motion to?
Sure. I move that we authorize the manager to negotiate a local initiative program agreement for 104 Main Street.
Second.
Okay. Motion second. Any further discussion? If any, none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Okay. Next item is to review and act on a one day all alcohol license application of Denise Higgins, St. John's High School, 378 Main Street for reunion on Saturday, September 24th from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Pleasure of the board.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Okay. Next item is to review and act on a proclamation request from Valerie Clemmie, Communications Coordinator for Selco for Energy Efficiency Day pursuant to the Board of Selectmen Policy 30.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. Motion second. Any further discussion? If any, none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Motion carries. Item 13 is to review and act on the proclamation request from Stephen Feierstein, Volunteer Director, Kids Cancer Connection for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month pursuant to Board Selectmen Policy 30.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. We have motion second. Any further discussion? If any, none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. If you have none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Okay, next. Next item is to review an act to appoint one member to the Affordable Housing Trust for a few, for a two-year term to expire on June 30th, 2024. We have four people who expressed interest. This is the seat, the Phil...
Steven Trado.
Steven Trado, right. That, we've delayed this for, for a while. Four people submitted letters of interest, Martha Gannon, Roberta Goldman, Sanam Zaire, and Louise Karum. So, what is the pleasure of the board? Yes, Mr. Samir?
Mr. Chairman, first, I'd like to thank all four applicants for applying for this. They all have excellent credentials, and it was a very difficult choice reading through them, having familiarity with all of them who have been active in our community in various ways. I would like to nominate one candidate, Martha Gannon. We had an opportunity before. She had applied for another position, Registrar of Voters, and some, consistent with our policy, that as we have people apply for various positions, it's when other opportunities come up, it could be up for consideration. In this case, she also applied for this position. So, I was very impressed having had a conversation with her before, as well as recently as well. So, I think all of the candidates are excellent, but I would like to nominate Martha Gannon for this role.
Okay, anybody like to make a second?
No second.
Okay, you have a motion second. Okay, would anybody else like to nominate, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate, I agree with, with Mr. Samia that all four are great and really appreciate their, their willingness and initiative to apply for this role. I would like to nominate Sanam Zaire. And I really base it on also recognizing someone who is trying to, you know, be more engaged in the community and I think has a strong, you know, passion for affordable housing and in no way disagreeing with other nominations, but that would be my, my nomination.
Okay, so we have a second?
Second. Second.
Okay, okay, so we have a motion and a second for two candidates. So, we'll vote on each one. So, we have not, so we have Martha nominated and Sanam. All those in favor of appointing Martha Gannon, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so that vote was four to one. All those in favor of appointing Sanam Zaire?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
No. Okay, so, we have four votes for, to appoint Martha Gannon and one vote for Sanam. So, Martha is appointed to the position. Thank you to everyone who applied. We're running to your, to, the name, no, this appointment coming up again next year, right? Because we're staggered, so there's still, there'll be another opportunity.
It's a two-year.
Yeah, but we're staggered because it's the beginning, so we got another one coming up in a year.
Yes.
Okay. I guess we're down to correspondence, right? Okay, item fifteen is an email dated August 25th from Sandra Weed. Announcing her resignation from the Cultural Council, so noted. I think Sandra's been on there for a while, thank her for her service. Item sixteen is an email dated August 27th from Jared Woodruff, 5122 Avalon Way, regarding American religious artwork, so noted. Item seventeen is an email dated August 28th from Robert Holland of the Scholarship Committee regarding a letter he got from John Yang Lu, thanking him for the scholarship he received for the college scholarship that he got, so noted. Item eighteen is a letter received on August 29th from Nancy Burnett, announcing her resignation from the Historic District Commission, so noted. And we thank her for her service. Item nineteen is an email dated August 30th, 2022, from Mohammed Nalawi, Five Brookdale Circle, regarding playground renovations and specifically requesting a splash pad. Mr., Mr. Mizikar had answered that it was impossible to add that into the current program, and the gentleman requested that we try to work that in. And I think we should refer that over to POC and REC because that's something that would fall under the, under the area responsibility. I think it would be a good idea, but I know there's operational costs and issues with that, so. Well, it won't happen this year, but they have to work it into a budget. And we can send a letter to that if I can, if I don't know. Item twenty is an email dated September 6th, 2022, from Natalie Foster, regarding the BF Foot Half Marathon. Thank you note for allowing the marathon to go on, so noted. Item twenty-one is a letter received September 6th from Geo-Sentec Consultants regarding a notification of Phase One Site Investigation Completion and Tier Classification 115 on, oh, Tier One Classification. I think it's Tier One Classification. 115 Northeast Cut Off, Worcester, Mass., so noted. Item twenty-two is an email dated September 7th from Dr. Nora Lee, Principal at Humber Academy, thanking us for attending the September announcement of sixteen dollars of funding for the reconstruction of Route 20 from South Street and Valenti Drive. Congressman was able to secure funding for that project, which a lot of people, including Representative Kane, have been working on. And it is in the schedule, but it's still going to take a few years, but at least there's money there to do the work when it finally makes it through all the planning and approvals. Item twenty-three is a letter received September 8th from Shonda Green from the Department of Telecommunications and Cable regarding license expiration notice. The cable license with the light department expires on March 28th, 2023, and they're requesting a status report of our licensing efforts by September 20th, 2022. This board is the licensing authority for the cable license, and so we negotiate with Selco. Just, it's kind of odd that we're negotiating with, almost like negotiating with ourselves, but we have to negotiate that. And so, the manager, you've had beginning discussions.
Yeah, we've had meetings between myself and General Manager Christopher Roy. We'll provide that update to the Department of Telecom and Communications. And then we will be, again, circulating draft documents to the board and updating you at your meeting in the next few months, as we have to finalize everything by March.
Right, this is, it, the last time was a real interesting process. We don't have to negotiate splitting SPAC off, excuse me, media connection from the light department as we did the last time, but still, it's, it's interesting and complicated, so. I don't know if you'll enjoy it, but it's certainly different than what we're used to doing. Item twenty-four is an email dated September 8th from Chief Fona regarding the 911 remembrance, which we attended at the fire headquarters. And item twenty-five is a CBA decision from Julian Mecca, not from Julian Mecca. CBA decision for Julian Mecca for a special permit for property located at 26 O'Neil Road. Is there anything else to come before the board in open session? If you have none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. This meeting is adjourned. Good evening.
They got me in most.
Jeff, what brings you down here?